Corinne, have a seat up here with us. Nobody else is there?
Thanks.
You can sit at the big table.
No more sitting with the workers.
I like the little tables.
Well, you know, she has her own territory.
You don't mind signing in?
Oh, I already sent one around.
He sent one around.
She's all right there.
I'm going to call this meeting if the planning board to order. Today is September 13th, we're over at the MLDA school. I'll start with a roll call.
All right then.
Tom McGinn.
Roger Moore.
Rich Genom. The town planner, Tad Redway, is on vacation.
And the other members?
And the other members, I don't know where they are.
I know some of them were not going to be here, but I'm not sure who was not. I didn't even know anyone was on holiday.
We have on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda, approval of minutes, citizen comment, public hearing for capable canine, a public hearing for Legro's Lane. We are then going to break and review the application for capable canine and for Legro's Lane. Then we will continue the public hearing on PaveTech that was continued from August 23rd. And then we will have new applications from Arundel Machine Tool, a site plan review, and then there will be other business. Gentlemen, I would like to move...
I'd like to make a motion, we move the Arundel Machine Tool to the top of the agenda.
Right after the first of public hearings.
After the first of public hearings. And also, I don't think there's enough members to approve minutes of July 26th, I want to follow this today.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there are. I don't think there are enough of us here.
We're going to table that for the next meeting.
So we'll table this, okay?
I'll second that.
Both of them, yes. Okay, a motion has been...
One clarification, put Arundel Machine after the two.
After the public hearing for capable canine and for Legro's.
Okay, not after the...
No, it should be fairly quick.
Okay.
All those in favor of the amended agenda?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Okay, citizen comment. Anything that you would like to comment on that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will close citizen comment. And we will start the first public hearing, which is capable canine. A proposal to convert a portion of an existing residential structure into a dog kennel and training facility on an 8.9 acre parcel lot located at 863 Alfred Road, tax map 5 Lot 1, in the R4 district. Jessica Robichaud is the owner and applicant.
Time.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is 7:02. Does anybody, the applicant is here, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Robichaud? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. We'll call it 7:04, so at least we can record it properly. The next item is a public hearing for Legro's Lane private way application. A proposal to extend Legro's Lane an additional 625 linear feet for the purpose of providing legal access and frontage for two residential lots exempt from subdivision review under 30A MRS-A 4401.4 and 4401.4D-4. On a 46.95 acre parcel, tax map 23, Lot 15, in the R4 SO and RP districts, Agent Francis V. Legro is the owner applicant and Dana Libby, RLS, is the applicant's agent. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Legro?
Time.
Oh, I'm sorry, 7:04. Yes, sir.
Are we going to get to talk after the presentation or...?
No, if the public wants to make comments on it, now is the time to do so.
Okay. One, my name's Tim Littlefield, I live on Legro's Lane. We got together, four of us got together, we're trying to get a road, a maintenance agreement for the place. Hasn't happened, it's been like a year now.
I was under the impression that there was a road maintenance agreement.
There's an old one, but there's like three, two or three or something like that.
Not everybody's on it.
On the same one.
Okay.
Different ones, so we're trying to get it nailed down to one. And lawyer sent it over to their lawyer, but we haven't heard back what's going on with that. So that's one, we'd like to get that nailed down, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, but this issue is different than what you're trying to do right now. This is for the rest of the road that I have to pay and that I have to get taken care of, okay?
So are you part of the existing agreement?
Yeah, we're the first of houses.
Yeah.
My guess is the attorney's going to be crafting one agreement?
Well, there was one agreement, I don't know...
We submitted this, you're right, there are a couple of different agreements that we submitted though.
And it's all written in hands.
Yeah, well...
So wait.
So you really will need to have an agreement that's in place or not three or four different agreements, you have to have the final one, because the whole road is all considered one road.
I know, but I mean, I'm the one that's going to have to build for this road. It's not them right now, it's me. My husband worked on it for at least three years before he passed away. And, you know, I have spent quite a bit of money now to try to get this thing going. And I don't, the issue is, right now, I don't know what the issue is actually. I don't know what they're concerned about. After they've signed the papers, some of them, I don't get, I don't understand when they bought, like, these are different people that are here now that, you know, some of them are different people, but I don't know. Well, I don't know you because I've never really spoken to you too much, you know. I know Denise, and, oh, I know Sean.
We were approached by Bud a few years before he passed away with a new maintenance agreement that he wanted us to sign on the hood of his pickup truck. And we took that agreement and we got a lawyer together between all the families that live on the road to look at it. And then we came up with a proposed agreement that we agreed upon and we never heard back. So there's not a road agreement that's really, other than that one, that we agreed to help maintain and plow. Are we going to extend our responsibility to help maintain and plow all the way? It would be nice if we had all one agreement that, you know, everybody agreed upon. We're not opposed to them building houses and constructing and developing the property.
Is your lawyer that's working on your end?
Yes, and I have Milda Kastner. I've never, I've asked her if they come, I knew that they had gone to a lawyer and I knew that they were discussing things, but they've never, I've never been told what the outcome is of that.
Well, it's part of the private way, that's part of the requirement. It is a road maintenance agreement that all the parties are in agreement to. So to add the extra lots to this road, it's going to have to be one road agreement, maintenance agreement with all parties.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, the way I understand it just now as it was explained, okay, there were several ones, several different agreements, okay? But which one is in place and are these people who are presently here tonight, are they in agreement to what is in existing now?
Those are all in place and they're in, they're forcible.
I would say the one that's in place was the original one that was signed, because nothing has been signed after that.
No, there are, there are actually a couple of different ones before.
Are there? Okay. Then whichever the last one that was recorded...
And also, when my husband was asked by my lawyer, by the lawyer, to go around and ask the people to sign, because he thought, my husband thought they were all in agreement. We didn't know that they weren't, was issue that they didn't want.
Well, you guys wanted us to take ownership of the road and we didn't want ownership of the road. We signed a maintenance agreement and that's what we wanted to stick with, was a maintenance agreement, not to own the road.
But the original agreements weren't filed.
The original agreements weren't filed.
Yeah, well, these agreements, there's two, there's like, one, two...
I'm sorry, can I use your name so I can...
My name's Scott Little, I live on Legro's Lane.
There's two agreements that are recorded. There's one agreement that doesn't, that was done in 2010 with Sean Colla.
Yeah, that's Mike Grando.
Okay, that doesn't appear to be recorded. Uh, yeah, it is recorded. Then there's one agreement, that's 2010, then was an agreement in...
What page are you going to turn?
Uh, that's under the tab. Road maintenance agreements. And there was one done... 2002 with John Robert.
Yeah, I bought that property. I had, I had my house.
But there's no road maintenance agreement that has everybody listed.
No, that's what I'm looking at, you have, I don't believe so.
Then we're going to have to...
Because it doesn't matter to me, I don't care.
Then this one that was recorded in 2002 with Timothy Littlefield and Diane Turner.
To say this, it's not a deal breaker, but it really, it has to be, as you just said, it has to be in place. We need that before we can approve anything. So it might delay until the next meeting. I don't think we can really act on this stuff.
No, until we have something on the, we can review everything, we can discuss it all, but until we have that road maintenance agreement, we're not going to be able to move forward.
Otherwise, it'd be more legal problems down the road for everybody to sit.
It's a great pro, if you had one that had all of the people that live on that road with an agreement, it would be easy enough to amend to add other people in, but you don't have one.
Everything else about the plan looks...
Right, but I think, you know, the agreements are signed, and I think they were written as the people bought the properties, that's what it looks like happening.
Yeah.
But you should, you should, the original agreement should have been amended to add in an individual, to add in the next individual, if you don't have one. And I'm just going, I'm going to say, if Marty lives on that, on that road, and you didn't have an agreement with Marty, he has no obligation to do anything on that road.
Well...
That's, can be a problem, especially for other people who have signed the paperwork and want to live on that road.
Well, the agreements are maintenance agreements, so my biggest fear is, I'm okay with them being the same as the way it was, pretty much. But my fear is, is that we're getting older and we're getting ready to retire, that if houses, more houses go in there, that the town comes to us and say, well, this has to be a town approved road, you've got X number of houses, and then we have to pay to upgrade that road.
That will not happen. As a private way, that will not happen. You would be making the approach to the town, saying, this road meets the town's standards. This is what it is. We have built the road up to that point and we want the town to accept it. The town will not say to you, we want you to build it up.
Okay, that was one of our major fears, you know? And the other thing too, is these are residential lots, there's not going to be businesses running in and out of there, or, because we're seeing...
We're told they're residential lots.
Okay, so it's not businesses in there, so there's not going to be like business equipment down there going in and out and stuff like that, that's another...
Not that we know of. Okay? Any other questions for the applicant from the public? Okay, hearing none at 7:14, I will end this public hearing.
Mr. Fuiter.
Yeah, Mr. Fuiter.
Presently, all those who are living on the existing roadway minus the new section are all parties signed onto the road agreement.
That's right.
They are.
Okay, to the three different ones that are recorded.
There's some newer people...
Do we have...
Oh, the one...
I'm hoping you didn't list my name on there.
Did it, did it listen predecessor?
We did sign a road maintenance agreement, and I'm sure it's in our file, buried in our house.
Yes, I think it's looking in here.
But, you know, I don't know, I, we just wanted to make sure that it was all aligned.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense that it's one agreement where there are all the parties' signatures are on it.
Well, this is what we were hoping that it would be.
Well, it was presented to us, we take ownership of the road, and that's what scared us. It was presented to us that we owned the road, and that's what scared us. So we didn't want to own the road because in case if the town came back and said, you had to upgrade it, we had to pay, that's the way it was presented.
But I knew that, I had a feeling that...
Yeah, that's what was presented to us, that scared us.
But I'll tell you, my dear, with all the so far that it's cost, you haven't had a penny that you had to pay, I know.
I can't guarantee you that 50 years from now, if the town won't do that, but right now, the town's position is no, unless you approach the town, the town's not going to approach you.
And you said it was 18 feet, right?
I believe it's 18 feet, I'd have to look at the standard on it, but I believe it's 18 feet, privately.
Okay, because it is. And it's really, how much, what do you have for the road, the cul-de-sac?
Another 750 feet.
Yeah, but the width of the road?
Okay, we're going to, we're going to continue on. We have a pending application for capable canine. A proposal to convert a portion of an existing residential structure into a dog kennel training facility on an 8.9 acre parcel located at 863 Alfred Road, tax map 5 Lot 1, in the R4 district. Jessica Robichaud is the owner and applicant. Does the board have any questions?
Yes, sir. Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Terry, we never close public hearings because I ask...
Yeah, I closed it at 7:14.
You did.
Because I had questions, that's why...
And in the public hearing, the board is not supposed to be asking the questions. The public hearing is for the public. We will have our chance when we go through them and discuss it.
Okay, that's why we're just kind of, time, time.
Okay. Corinne reminded me, the new application for Arundel Machine Tool Company was moved to the top of the list. Gentlemen, the only purpose, the only reason this is here is because they have, they have expanded their building more than once. If they had not, this would not even be here, it would have run a site plan review, and I entertain a motion to allow a site plan review to take this over and take it off our agenda.
Make a motion that goes to site plan review.
That would be staff review, right? You say site plan, you mean staff stuff.
Staff, yes, I'm sorry.
All others, it's just that the garage, the thing is banned, dude?
Yep, correct. And because they had already come to us for the initial expansion, the rules say that they have, they have to come back and have the whole thing reviewed. I see no reason that we can't just let staff review take care of this.
Yeah, it's not really disturbing any, so whatever, you can, I'm all right with that, so I'll make the motion that we...
Right, I'm ready to make it.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, is there any other discussion about this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, we'll let, let the staff know, they can come walking over and take a look at it.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Back to the capable canine. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Robichaud? Hearing none, can I read quickly?
Yes.
Whereas on September 14th, 2017, the Arundel Planning Board received the condition to use pre-application from Jessica Robichaud to convert a portion of an existing residential structure into a dog kennel and training facility on an 8.9 acre parcel located at 863 Alfred Road, tax map 5 Lot 1, in the R4 district. Whereas on September 30th, 2017, the planning board scheduled a site walk on the property. However, the applicant requested a postponement until December 2nd, 2017, whereupon the planning board did conduct the requisite site walk and informed the applicant of a number of design modifications that must be addressed in the major conditional use application. Whereas on August 9th, 2018, the planning board received a major conditional use application from Jessica Robichaud, providing details of the proposed facility and addressing the concerns expressed by the planning board at the December 2nd, 2018 site walk. Whereas the applicant made additional changes to the application upon review and the planning board deemed the application complete on August 23rd, 2018. Whereas on September 13th, 2018, the planning board conducted a public hearing in conformance with the land use ordinance section 9.2.9. And whereas, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision, excuse me, findings of fact, one, the owners of the property are Jessica Robichaud and Terrence Knight. Two, the property is located at 863 Alfred Road, tax map 5 Lot 1, in the R4 district. Number three, land use ordinance section 610-2 lists the proposed dog training and kennel facility as a conditional use in the R4. Number four, the applicant proposes to convert the ground floor of the existing residence for use as a common social room and crate sleeping area, while a 40 by 40 outdoor play area will provide an exercise and training area in the front of the residence. Double gate entry system between the building and the pens will prevent canine escapes. Number five, the proposed outdoor exercise and training yard is screened from the adjacent property to the east by large conifers and vinyl slat. And vinyl slats will be installed in the mesh fence to screen the play area from Alfred Road. Number six, the outdoor pen meets all the required setbacks of land use ordinance section 9325. Number seven, the applicant proposes to compost all dog refuse and cleanup materials in a subterranean compost bin as prescribed by the state of Maine, located more than 100 feet from all onsite and adjacent water supply wells. Number eight, the applicant has received a provisional license to operate a dog kennel from the state of Maine. Number nine, the applicant will provide a total of seven parking spaces, including a handicap space, to meet the parking demands of her operation based upon the class size and her submitted business plan. Number 10, an eight-square-foot wooden sign meeting the design standards of land use ordinance section 51711 will be installed at the entrance of the existing driveway on Alfred Road and set back from the intersection sufficiently as to not impede drive site Number 11, the applicant is not proposing to install any additional outdoor lighting. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section 929 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. 929-1, that the use is compatible with and similar to general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The proposed use is permitted in the BI district... In the R4 district. That is the reason we're reading this. It is, the proposed use is a permitted use in the R4 district and is consistent in scale and use with other uses in the surrounding neighborhood and district.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 9.1, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 929-2, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan specifies such animal husbandry and natural resources as the dog training facility kennels to be consistent with the goals and land use objectives of the R4 district.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
929-3, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed site will not generate significant trip generation since dog training classes are held in the morning and afternoon, unlimited to no more than six or seven participants.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Aye.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. 929-4, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The existing septic system will not be used to dispose of dog waste. A state-approved dog composting bin will be used to dispose of waste and located more than 100 feet from onsite and adjacent well systems. Existing water supply on the site is sufficient to meet the needs of the proposed new use.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 929-5, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that some dog barking is anticipated to be generated from the proposed use. However, since the proposed use is as a canine training facility, it is expected that barking nuisances will be mitigated and controlled and will not be a significant impact to neighbors. No additional exterior lighting sources are proposed. An existing PAR 38 floodlight provides illumination of the proposed parking lot.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 929-6, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The proposed use will not measurably change the existing topography, slopes, soils, or vegetative cover of the site.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 929-7, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 929-8, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all the pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed activities.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the condition to use application of Jessica Robichaud to convert a portion of an existing residential structure into a dog kennel and training facility on an 8.9 acre parcel located at 863 Alfred Road, tax map 5 Lot 1, in the R4 district, subject to the following conditions. The applicant cannot secure a certificate of occupancy for the proposed use until the state of Maine inspects and issues a dog kennel license for capable canine facility and all of the site improvements are installed as approved by the planning board. Number two, the applicant shall post a surety instrument in the amount of $5,000 as required in section 10.7 of the land use ordinance to assure that all work is performed in accordance with the plans so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this 13th day of September 2018.
So move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Marty, you have discussion?
Yes. Surety bond or whatever else that, if, if it's not completed, won't be able to get a license from the state. So I mean, there's nothing there to turn, and it's on her own property.
She does have a provisional license from the state right now.
Yes.
It's up to you, gentlemen. I'm assuming that Tad told you about that, right?
Yeah.
And it was discussed, so, yeah.
Sort of, I guess maybe at the last meeting, so I just need, you mean, put the get the fence up, have all that stuff, then they come back, basically, and then they prove it, I think they have to, I guess that's the process.
Well, you have, you have to, you have to post the $5,000 bond at town hall.
I don't know what that means, but sure. No, actually, no, it has not been discussed, I don't know what, no, so, yeah, that's fine. Yes, they did mention that a little bit.
Last meeting.
Yes.
So the, the $5,000 wasn't in the last meeting?
Nope, nope, it was not.
That's why I'm asking the question, and it's up to the board.
We can take it out, gentlemen.
Yeah, we can take it out.
We can take it out. Make a motion to strike item number two.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove item two pertaining to the $5,000 bond that we're applying.
I think officially, I need to get my motion, so, so I'll, I'll do that.
You'll make a motion?
What you said.
Roger, you going to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to amend the findings of fact by removing item number two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, congratulations. We will get, I'll get Tad to reprint this, we'll get it signed.
When's he due back?
He's due back next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Yeah.
So can we start, like, putting the fence up, or do I have to have that?
Yes, I see the CO.
I see the CO.
Call the board, they're opposite.
Okay.
Right, because he's the person that you would be talking to.
Oh, all right.
And, and he will know that this has been approved.
Okay.
You did a good job in all this, sir. Thank you, you did your homework, good job.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Item number two is Legro's Lane private way application. A proposal to extend Legro's Lane an additional 625 linear feet for the purpose of providing legal access and frontage for two residential lots exempt from the subdivision review on... under thirty A MRS A four-four-zero-one-four and four-four-zero-one-four D four on a forty-six-point-nine-five-acre parcel tax map twenty-five lot fifteen in the R four SO and RP district. Francis LaGro is the owner applicant, Dana Libby, RLS, is the applicant's agent.
To return?
Yes.
Question. Since we did not have a quorum or minute of the site walk, I think we have a quorum now for the site walks.
Hey, you were there.
That's what I'm saying.
You're right, okay. That was the first meeting.
Since it's related to this, that site walk minute.
Okay.
So we can put that aside and get that and proceed.
Well, we could proceed with this anyway.
Okay.
And do the sidewalk, the sidewalk at the end. But I appreciate that.
Well, Susan may have to leave because she has to go to the airport. That's why I'm trying to.
I'll be here at eight-thirty.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking that.
We don't, we don't need more.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
After this may be approved, then we can review the minutes on that one, sir.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay. Mr. Libby.
Yeah, I guess with, with the conversation that happened during the public hearing, I'd like to see if the board is willing to entertain a condition of approval that Mrs. LaGro supply a single road maintenance agreement agreeable to landowners to TAD prior to permits being issued for construction or building.
How do you feel about it? You, you've marked out on the plan where the driveway going back to.
That's correct.
The campus.
Board wanted to know where that was, so that's, that's shown on the plan now. It comes right off the end of the public hearing.
Was that the only change that you made to the plan?
To the chair on that?
Yeah, Marty.
All existing people present and also have it so that it can be updated if property is sold, that the new owners of any property has to sign the maintenance agreement?
No, you don't need to do that. Once, once the.
I'm just.
Once the landowner signs it, it's recorded in the registry, it's actually attached to the lots. And that agreement is in place for all lots.
Okay, I'm just taking it.
Yep.
Here's, here's a question, sir.
The change of ownership will not impact that agreement. The new owner will have no choice. They have to abide by it.
We've seen that happen almost before. That's why I'm saying that.
I'm glad I don't have to deal with that because I have a, I had a couple of clients who had road maintenance agreements and they couldn't get the people to pay. And that's, that's better somebody else's problem than mine.
Hey, that answers, that takes care of the question.
Are you guys amenable to doing that? We can make it a condition of approval that they, they don't get a permit until after they have submitted to a road maintenance agreement?
I think, I'd rather see it in place. I think it, whenever it occurs, everything else is done very well and I haven't seen any problems, but.
I, I have a question I'd like to ask. Does your lawyer work with my lawyer? I don't know. I have no idea.
He has, and I think, and two weeks ago, he said he was going to present with all of us agreeing. He wrote up a road agreement and I'll send him an email and see where he's at with your lawyer.
Yeah, because I, I have no idea. I mean, you know, I'm happy to just dish out money, but I'm not even, you know, hearing anything from. I, I, as a matter of fact, she's gone for two days. My lawyer's gone for two days. She'll be back next week. But, I mean, I don't understand. I know that this was discussed when you, I, I know it was discussed by Bud, and it was done because the lawyer asked him to. That's why those papers were sent out and the, and I guess she figured that he knew you people well enough, that that's why. And I, I had my doubts about it, I, about just doing it that way. I felt that it should have been the lawyer giving the papers, contacting you instead of him. So, that's how that came about.
Ms. LaGro? We're going to table this to the next meeting, which is on the twenty-seventh, so that the, the two lawyers will have time to get together and work that out and get the documentation submitted. We will put this on the agenda as the very first item.
Good.
Okay.
Without effect?
No, we can table it without, without a discussion, without a vote, okay?
I mean, yeah, because that way every, all the i's and t's are crossed and dotted.
Yeah, well, I mean, I would feel better if I knew everybody was in agreement.
Yes.
We went through.
Because I certainly don't have any, I never had feelings for anybody.
Well, it sounds like you're going to be able to get it sorted out.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think there's going to be an issue.
I know.
I'm not really hearing any, any disagreement or dissent at all. I think you just need to have that document in place.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's talk about the minutes.
Get together.
I know people on how.
On the site.
I think you know just a few minutes.
On the site. Any discussions on any errors or anything that anyone knows? Over the site walk minutes?
Might need a septic, septic at some point. Or that's a little.
I'm moved to approve those minutes. Make them approved the minutes of that site walk.
Okay, I need a second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the site walk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, anyone abstention? We are good to go. The next item on the agenda is the pave, the continuation from August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. A proposal for the establishment of contract VR two operation for an existing paving contract business located on an interior five-acre parcel, tax map thirty-seven lot eight A, served by the private way Stillton Lane with access to Upstate Road in the R four district. William Stillton is the owner of Cave Tech Corporation, the applicant, and Jason, I've kind of butchered his name. Latvatis? Thank you. PE of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the applicant's agent. Mr. Jones, are you ready?
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order.
Yes, sir.
I realize we took up a lot of airtime for the last public hearing, so I'll be respectful. This has nothing to do with us presenting additional testimony. Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, this has to do with you.
Okay.
Personally, and the way you conducted yourself at the last hearing. I was shocked. I've been before you, before Rich, and I've been before this board, before a lot of other boards, but the way that hearing opened up last time in September was, to me, was shocking. Before the public hearing was even open, you started on, I'm going to gavel down anybody who talks about past history. Now, these were public documents that we submitted into the record. And then, before the applicant even put his case on, you quickly tried to close the public hearing. And I had to get up and you said, well, no one raised their hand. This really raises a real concern for me, Rich. And you talked about gavelling down anyone who seeks to commit a character assassination. These are, it's a public document that we submitted in writing, saying, by the way, to the entire board, we, Mr. Randcourt and I are going to present testimony. We're going to have witnesses. We have things we want to say and things we want to submit. But you tried to close the public hearing, knowing full well in writing beforehand that we were intending to do this. And it was only me jumping up out of my seat that we got a chance to talk. This concerns me, and I think there is some, there is, there is grounds for this board for you to consider recusing yourself from sitting on this case. You said, and I quote, this is all on tape, "Everyone in this room was an alcoholic when they were eighteen." I mean, that really, I couldn't believe my ears. Regardless of the fact, Mr. Stillton's record has some alcohol in it, again, public record, to say that, to me, shows bias on your part right from the get-go, that this applicant, you want him to be treated differently, more fairly. I mean, along the way, you also said, this isn't just about the butters' rights, it's about the applicant's rights. I mean, those sorts of comments in the context of a public hearing, even before the public hearing began, were very concerning to me, and I've got, these matters are written out. And I just want you to consider recusing yourself. I think the board should consider what I've just said.
If the board wants me to recuse myself, I will, but I will not voluntarily do so. The fact that I said that whenever, when we were eighteen, we were all alcoholics, we all drank like fish, and I count myself in the same category.
Well, whether you do or don't, and whether that's true or not, to me, it just showed bias. Flat out, it was just, to me, off the chart. So I'm asking this board to consider taking a vote to recuse you. Or you've already said you won't recuse yourself.
I will not. If the board wishes me to recuse myself, I will do so. That is a decision the board can make.
Mr. Chairman, could I address this point of order that you?
Absolutely.
David Jones for the applicant. We did object, as you know, to the introduction of character testimony that was really not relevant to the factors that are applicable in this proceeding, which is whether or not this property can be used as a contractor yard two and meet the requirements of the conditional use permitting process. And you are not called upon in your ordinance to pass judgment on the character of the applicant or on the likelihood or lack of likelihood that the town will enforce restrictions that you may impose. So I agree with the chair's decision. In fact, I appreciated it because we have objected to this business of dragging people's reputation through the mud on what is really a land use proceeding. And so I appreciate the fact that you said that you would not allow that testimony to take place, and I had specifically objected to it, and I appreciate your having announced that you were not going to allow it. Thank you.
I'm speaking for myself and not for the board. I am not going to make any movement to have you recuse yourself from this. I think calling the public meeting when you did, I thought it was entirely appropriate because as we saw tonight, it happens many times, any questions from the audience and it's just a silence, and we have to choose, we have to decide, right, whether that's the end of it or not. And there was, there was the same amount of silence and no one spoke up. And I was surprised that, it looks like that was quick. I was, I was expecting more. So that, that was timely and I think it was appropriate.
With all, excuse me, can I, with all due respect, Lynn Howe, forty-nine Michigan Road. I was here. You had spent a few minutes talking about what you would or would not permit and gavelling down, and then you said, are there any questions? That, to me, and it was three seconds, or you can watch it on the tape, of silence. It wasn't extended silence. And the fact that you had written notification from two attorneys stating that we'd be here, that they were representing their clients, and that they had additional information to share, it felt, I agree with Bruce, it felt biased. It felt like you were trying to shut the meeting down. So, you know, everyone has their own opinions, but it, we felt completely shut off when you had written notice that that was, that we were going to be here with plenty to say.
I think we're, I think this is getting off track, because if anything, we gave your point of view the entire night. So I saw no bias at all from this, from this board, from the chairman. I thought it was really extending all the courtesy of, of that evening. And at the expense, no, no, at the expense, I want, I'd rather just move on to the other side. Because, because there was the, the other side that, that did show up and had no opportunity. They could just as well be asking for, for the chair to recuse himself. So we, as far as I see it, we've, we've been right in the middle and very unbiased so far.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't think that we should make Rich the object of the discussion. I think the point right now raised by you is whether or not past behavior is relevant to whether or not a permit should be granted. And unless Maine is different than other states and real estate development, I think, given my limited experience, that past performance and behavior does impact whether or not permits are granted. So I don't think what you just raised as a point of order is really accurate because permits aren't given in a vacuum. And I think everything has to be considered. It may not need to go back two decades, but if there are more recent examples of behavior that indicates that permits aren't going to be, or conditional uses aren't going to be abided by, then I think that is relevant, unless Rich tells me otherwise, to be considered in the granting of a permit, whether it's in this instance or others. That's my personal opinion. I'd be willing to get a legal opinion on that. You're certainly a lawyer and you work in real estate, so you know you've been on both sides of the coin whether or not behavior, you know, when you have the facts, you argue the facts. When you're, when the law's on your side, you argue the law. So, you know, everybody can make an argument for either one, but both sides, the permit itself and its legality and the behavior of the developer are, is relevant, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of granting a permit.
There are many of the issues that were brought up that I have serious concern with, but all related to following the requirements or the conditions that were set forth on that use. And there were, there are some issues that we need to address.
Right, and I don't, I don't think it should be made the object of.
Whether someone had a criminal record or a stop, going to a stop sign twenty-five, thirty years ago, I don't see how that's relevant at all because it has nothing to do with the use of the law.
Mr. Mayor, this is all to wait. What I'm arguing, what I'm arguing here is it should come out. You guys can talk about it just the way you are. If you think something twenty-five years ago is doesn't matter, that's, I just want to have the discussion, that's fine. But to arbitrarily say six years, that's the cutoff, and gavelling down anybody who wants to talk about any prior history, that was what concerned me, and by the way, we did take up a lot of airtime, but it was only because you were asking us to go first. Every other public hearing has been under the planning board. The applicant goes first. The applicant stands up and presents their case. David will tell you the same thing. And I was expecting that to happen, but you asked us to speak, so we had to put on our case. And tonight, as long as they want to speak, and they're here, I feel bad that they didn't get to speak last time. It just happened we wanted to put our case on, so as long as they want to take, we're not trying to cut anybody off.
Well, we heard you, and I think, not to, not that Rich can't speak on his own, but I think you, you know, it's time for the other side to put it on, and I think we're aware of your objection and will be mindful of that, and we'll listen to the facts and hopefully come to a fair conclusion. Who do you think?
Mr. Chair. If that's the case, this is, you would be the second one to have been asked to recuse themselves of this. You weren't, weren't present, I think, at the first meeting.
Right.
If this, if this is the case, then are we saying that this board is not qualified to even hear, to do anything?
Can I raise a point of order? This is just the public hearing, right? At, at this point, yes. It's not the applicant putting on the whole show or anything like that, correct? The applicant will, will put on, put on.
That's what happens in a public hearing.
His, his information about what is going on. And the, the butters will have, and the rest of the public will have an opportunity to question you.
Oh, okay. You want to make that right?
The board will not be questioning because that's not our position in the public hearing. Marty, do you have any problem with my staying on?
No.
Roger?
No.
Susan?
I do not.
Mr. Jones, if you would, please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We ended last meeting with a question about wetlands. And in the interim, we've had the opportunity to hire Jim Logan, who is a wetlands consultant and specialist, and he's here tonight to report on what he found in evaluating the site for wetlands. Kind of, Jim, if you'd like to, go ahead.
For the last minute, we jockeyed the schedule around so we could get out there when we were out there Tuesday. Put the lid on the making some small problems. Maybe that was just near now, so. Jim, you may want to give this base on the rest of the, everybody else.
See, that way it's broadcasting.
I'm sorry, my reading's.
It's not high enough. Jason will do my tripod. He's got, he's got three legs. Yeah, as David suggested, I'm Jim Logan, wetland scientist with, with actually a new company for the last two and a half years, Longview Partners. Formerly about twenty-seven plus years worked for Albert Frick Associates, and did a lot of wetland delineation over a lot of acreage in Arundel as well as a lot of other towns. So this exercise of quantifying acreages of wetlands is not foreign to us at all. It's something that we've done before. So essentially, because I. So essentially, because I mentioned some issues about abutters and so forth, we, I had originally only delineated one edge of the wetland, and that was to determine its proximity to the project area. The subject came up of zoning around the wetland due to the acreage. You're familiar with the acreage requirements for different zones. So what we did was we downloaded into our GPS a background file that was the survey plan for the base, uh, base plan of the project. And then we navigated the outer edges of those boundaries. So we knew exactly where we were as we were going. And basically, fine-tuned the mapping on the edge that I hadn't previously looked at predominantly along this edge. This particular abutter in this house allowed us to stray a little bit onto her property. And we were able to do some of our work here. I was able to do work by traversing this property line and viewing the land in that direction. Similar type of thing here. This is our boundary, and this is our boundary. This way, I was able to visually see these separations. The process that we've used in the past is to, and your ordinance refers to narrowings in wetland areas for interpretation of zoning sizes in wetlands. When the neck occurs that is less than 100 feet wide and it occurs from more than 100 feet of length, that first 100 feet that is less than 100 feet wide and 100 feet long becomes part of the area calculation, but that's the limits of it, okay? So that's what these shaded areas are intending to show. These are the narrowings of the wetland. It's predominantly on Bill's land. Mr. Still, Mr. Still enjoys the predominant, the biggest part of this wetland area, which then outlets in this direction and heads off the rear of the lot that way and forms the narrowest neck. We calculated the area of everything that's crosshatched. And I bring that specifically to your attention. There's a little nuance here because our calculation is somewhat conservative. We think that the area, if you're using the hundred-by-hundred rule, was actually a whisker less than the 1.93 that we're showing because in this instance and in this instance, we've crosshatched an area longer than 100 feet. You see that? This is a 50-scale map, so this is three inches long, not two inches long. So really this, if I was to do this, we probably wouldn't cut this off here. And this was our area to calculate, and not this. Similar type of thing, it would've been an inch, two inches, we would've cut this area off, and that would've been out of the calculation. So I believe that this is actually less than 1.93. Tonight, for this meeting, for the purposes of the subject tonight, we were able to at least conclude that it is comfortably under two acres. So that was the conclusion we could reach with Tuesday's work and the revisions that I made to the mapping. As I said, I didn't, and this abutter was quite kind to us when we were along this line and suggested we could come onto the property to view it, but I didn't, I didn't need to. I saw everything I needed to from Mr. Stillton's property to come to the conclusions we needed to in terms of these narrowings that are less than 100 feet wide for longer than 100 feet length.
So how many feet do you get to fill in in the wetlands on your property if in fact you want to, you know, use it as high and dry or to be able to build it to operate your business?
Well, that's another question. It, that depends.
Is it like 4,000 square feet or 4,300 or something like that?
Well, only in certain wetlands that are, that are allowed to have the exemption. That, you're referring to the 4,300 square foot exemption that's typically allowed under the Natural Resources Protection Act of the State Department of Environmental Protection. There are certain instances, and shoreland zones are one of them, where you don't get that exemption. You have to go to the, be the permit. So, I mean, it's possible to get permits to fill all kinds of acreage of wetlands. It's a question of how hard it is to get the permit.
Oh, I just wanted to, because I wanted to know, has he used any of the wetlands to build his current, you know, pad to operate his business, but you can wait there.
Of course, and just to be clear, if the water or the flow tends to go out towards the back.
It is. It's all, these are fingers. There's a finger here, these two more fingers coming in, and there's a little bit of a sway layer that's draining on top of what goes here, and then it all heads out this way. You're saying that whatever might be on that-
We shouldn't be asking questions until, until this comes in front of us. This is the public hearing for the public to ask the questions.
Proceed.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to be permitted to ask questions?
Yes, sir, you will be.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Jones?
Yes, several things.
Thank you.
Obviously, we'll come back and answer questions on wetlands if there, if there are any.
I just want to make sure you have the opportunity to present your case.
Sure, thank you. We, I mailed two tag copies of easements that were granted by two abutters. Were those forwarded to you?
The noise, the dispersion?
Yes. Easements, you have those. Okay. I wanted to mention those because in the sound study that we presented, it shows that at a distance of 250 feet, which was the southerly boundary of the Stillton property, the projected noise level was 53 decibels. And the permitted noise level, even in residential area, is 55. So that the challenge with regard to the need to limit the noise level to a 15-minute period and to have one vehicle leave and then start up the other one and so forth, was not really relevant to the southerly boundary. It was relevant to the easterly and the northerly boundary. And the owners of the property to the, on the easterly and the northerly boundaries have granted easements to extend the, the project area for purposes of noise dispersion and visual barrier, an additional 200, 220 feet to the east, which with the 35-foot setback from the property line for the parking of the trucks, will give a minimum distance of 255 feet to the east and an even greater distance to the north. So that in all directions, there will be 250 feet or more of distance for purposes of calculating the noise level. And at that distance, our, our sound study shows that the noise level will be less than the permitted maximum from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM without regard to needing to exceed that 55-decibel limit. The reason that we had compressed the time of departure into 15 minutes was to take advantage of the 10-decibel permit to exceed that, to exceed the permitted amount by 10 decibels for a 15-minute period. But that was only necessary with regard to the easterly and the northerly property. And those owners have said they've granted an easement saying we extend that sound buffering area so that that 15-minute window and the 10, 10-decibel additional amount is not necessary. The, with regard to the realtors' letters that you received hypothetically saying that an owner might have to discount their price in order to sell the property because people are looking for a natural environment that is, you know, a quiet countryside. Whatever it is that people are looking for, your zoning ordinance and your comprehensive plan say that this area permits restricted contractor yards. And so if someone is looking for somewhere where nothing can be heard but the sound of nature, it shouldn't be in the R4 district. And so it's true, and we have to admit, that someone who comes to Maine thinking that they're not going to hear motor vehicles might very well not want to live in the R4 zone. It's not just Mr. Stillton's property. There are many properties in that area that generate noise. And the purpose of the R4 zone is to have a rural area, but to have a rural area that is characterized by working people who conduct their businesses or park their vehicles, store their equipment, operate farms, operate campgrounds, those kinds of things. And so you're not going to have a quiet environment where you simply listen to the crickets and the birds. And so we do have letters from other realtors who have come and looked at Mr. Stillton's property, and I'd like to read those to you and then present them. The first is from Kevin Talpey, from Talpey Realty Associates. To whom it may concern, we were asked to review the property at 31 Stillton Way to advise if the introduction of two additional registered vehicles will materially or adversely impact the neighborhood. 31 Stillton Way is a well-kept, well-maintained property in Arundel, Maine. The property was reviewed from a perspective relative to similar properties located within a one-half mile of the subject property. 31 Stillton Way is set back on a private drive in excess of 300 feet from a public way and was not visible to abutting properties. The property commands a value higher than surrounding properties due to its age, condition, and physical attributes. The neighborhood is characterized by smaller residential disparate properties that are not of comparable age or condition to 31 Stillton Way. Many of the properties in the immediate vicinity are in significant disrepair and currently store a combination of commercial vehicles, unregistered automobiles, and/or unregistered recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers. It is our professional opinion that the introduction of two additional registered vehicles to the 31 Stillton Way property will have no adverse impact to the valuation used or quiet enjoyment of any of its surrounding properties, given the following. The storage location where the vehicles are to be parked is not visible to the abutting properties or the public way, and the vehicles will be operable, registered, and in use and not stored in disrepair. We have a letter from Helen Curry of Kennebunk Beach Realty, to whom it may concern. I was asked to give an opinion on whether two additional trucks to be parked with the existing two would lower the values of surrounding properties. Since there is a wooded buffer creating a visual barrier, I would not make any downward change in my valuation of surrounding properties. This is assuming that the noise level created by the trucks is within the level which is acceptable by town and state standards. And then finally, David Troutier, Realty Sales, Inc., to whom it may concern. Bill Stillton came into my office and asked me to give him my professional opinion on the location of his home in regards to deevaluating the other homes in the area. I drove into the Stillton residence and then drove around the neighborhood. Stillton Way is a very long private drive with no structures or paving equipment remotely close to the road nor visible from the road. It appears the structures are probably 600, 500 to 600 feet in from the road. It's my opinion Stillton Way is not a negative distraction nor does it lower the values of the area. So you have differing opinions. Again, I, I think you have to look at this in the context of your comprehensive plan and your zoning ordinance, which specifically say that contractor yards subject to regulation are subject to restriction, which is what you're proceeding to consider, are permitted or allowed uses in this zone. As alluded to in some of these letters, I wanted to point out that we're not talking about adding four dump trucks and trailers to this property. The property has received a conditional use permit for two dump trucks and trailers and storage of equipment. And so it's the two additional ones that are being considered. And if they are operated in the way that's being proposed, which is start one up, let it warm up for three minutes and leave before you start the next one, the noise generated by that operation will actually be less than the operation of two dump trucks simultaneously in a location according to the previous approval, much closer to Mr. Giles' house than what's being proposed now. In fact, I, I, I would like to point out, I tried to address this very briefly last time, that Mr. Giles had submitted a document that he had labels on, and one of them he called the effluent runoff area, which is an area where he said the grass doesn't grow. In fact, that's the area where the gravel parking area was for the two dump trucks under the existing conditional use permit for a service company. So if the grass doesn't grow as richly there as in other areas, it's because it's a gravel basin, that's where the trucks were. And Mr. Stillton has started to park his vehicles up closer to Stillton Way as a courtesy to Mr. Giles to get them further away from his property than what was approved in the 2003 conditional use. So we would say that what's being proposed has the benefit of actually reducing the noise being generated on the site from what was approved in 2003. Also, with regard to impact on abutting properties, we have several letters from abutters. And there are some abutters here tonight who I-
May I ask a question?
It's up to the chair.
Yes.
Is there, does the board have a definition of abutters? I know we received the letter indicating that we needed to, you know, notice in the public hearing, I guess would be the correct word. How, how is an abutter defined?
They have, they, up against the property of, of the person who's getting the permit and are within-
250 feet.
Yeah, anybody that's within 250 feet of Mr. Stillton's property, whether they have abutted it or not, should have received a letter.
Okay, I just, as I, as he introduces this document, I would ask that the folks who are being referenced indicate their participation in the property, please.
Norman Noonan of 170 Senate Road. Bill's business is no problem as far as I'm concerned, he's a good neighbor. Dave Downstone, 169 Senate Road. Bill Stillton's business is not a problem as far as I'm concerned, he's a good neighbor. Christine Idon, I think, 160 Senate Road. Bill Stillton does not bother me or his truck. Ray, I love to ask Ray to speak for himself, I can't pronounce his last name. Heidi Schoenbrot, 179 Stillton Road. Mr. Stillton does not bother me with his trucks. Teresa O'Donnell. I've been living diagonally across the street, 153 Senate Road, from Mr. Stillton for 19 years. I don't know exactly when Mr. Stillton started his paving business, but I hardly notice his business at all. I very rarely hear his trucks coming or going. He's a very nice, hard-working gentleman and a family man. I like him so much, I had him pave my driveway several years ago. He is honest and dependable, and I would be happy to recommend him to anybody. Some folks have mentioned the quality of life has been reduced because of Mr. Stillton's business. It has not impacted my life whatsoever. His trucks leave in the morning and return in the late afternoon. Because his business is seasonal, his vehicles are not running every day. When I first moved from my home 19 years ago, there was very little traffic on our street. Now I have to wait for several cars to go by before I can pull out of my driveway, especially in the summer. Now I have to wait for several cars to go by before I can pull out of my driveway, especially in the summertime. We all know the traffic has increased during the months the Red Apple Campground is open. Does that mean we want them to close because it has reduced our quality of life by increased traffic, litter on our lawn, smoky campfires, et cetera? Definitely not. At the last meeting, there was a video recording of the sounds of Mr. Stillton's trucks beeping, et cetera. That disturbed me because the volume was turned up very high to make it sound like the noises were very loud. If the sound was turned down, we would hardly hear those noises. I don't think that was a fair analysis. I just wanted to make that point." So I'll submit all of these letters to you for your record.
Thank you. Make sure that Mr. Redway gets them.
Now also addressing the point that was made about Mr. Stillton and his previous violation of the ordinance. As you know, Mr. Stillton has entered into, I think you know, a consent decree with the Board of Selectmen in which he agreed to come before this board to present a conditional use application to pursue a contractor yard two permit. I think it would be contrary to the intent of the Selectmen to decide that Mr. Stillton was not eligible for a contractor yard two permit simply because he had violated the ordinance and had to enter into a consent decree with the town. If the Selectmen had decided that Mr. Stillton was not qualified because of his past behavior, then I think the consent decree would not have directed him to come to this board. So I don't think that this board is the proper place for you to decide whether or not Mr. Stillton's prior conduct disqualifies him and his property from receiving due consideration under the terms of your ordinance. That's all I have. Jason, did you have anything to add to that?
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on behalf of Mr. Stillton?
I'd like to say something. I've lived down the street from Mr. Stillton for probably 20 years.
Sorry, can you state your name, please?
My name is Saul Fetter. I live at 135 Senate Road. And I've never, ever had anything but good things to say about him and his gang of characters that he works with. Half of them went to school with my kids, okay? They've always been polite, they've always been nice. And the only thing I can say that I really hate is the fact that those trucks follow the speed limit, you know? So I mean, if you get behind them, okay, you're gonna be doing 35 miles an hour to get, you know, out of the area where we live. But as far as, you know, them having any impact on the neighborhood, there's been none. There's been nothing, nothing negative.
Anybody else would like to... Yes, sir. State your name, please.
118 Senate Road.
And your name was?
Dave Daggett.
Thank you.
A little bit of trouble. Hey, they'll come and help you out when in trouble.
Yes. My name's Norm Noonan. I live at 170 Senate Road. And I am, you know, the houses aren't that close, but I am an abutment of Bill's property. And I like to say that I think it's a silent majority of the neighborhood has no problem with what Bill's doing there. It's a paving business. The trucks leave in the morning and they come back at night. And, you know, during the day, it's not a problem. It's a couple of minutes in the morning, a couple of minutes at night, and it's over with. And I think he ought to be allowed to just go ahead and do his business.
Can I say a more thing? No. I'm gonna get this gentleman behind me first.
Ivan Langry. I live at 159 Senate Road, across the street from Mr. Stillton's business. And his road is directly across my property. And like I said, even more on vacation, his trucks, most of the time I'm going to work, by then they come out. But even more on vacation, there are no noise ordinance. As a matter of fact, I have more problems with all the bicycle traffic on the road than I do with Mr. Stillton's trucks.
Thank you.
I just want to add that, you know, his business has been there before most of the people who are complaining ever moved into the neighborhood. Okay, and when you moved into the neighborhood, your Realtor had to have told you that his business is there. And anybody can tell you, maybe he's gonna pick up a couple extra trucks one of these days, okay? But the idea that, you know, that you were gonna live out in the middle of nowhere, which in my eyes, you know, when I first came here, okay, my wife drove me down that street, and I thought, where the hell are you bringing me? Okay, 'cause to me, it was pretty woodsy, okay? But, you know, there are businesses there, and I really don't understand, you know, if you wanted to live in a different area where there weren't any businesses like his, you shouldn't have moved in into the area because he was already there.
Sir, that's not true.
That is outright fabrication.
We've all been there. We all were there before him.
Okay, then maybe 20 years you've been there?
Yes, yeah, 22.
The subdivision has been there since 1984.
Okay, then why would you be complaining about it?
No cross talk.
Sorry. Sorry.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on Mr. Stillton's behalf? Okay. I will now ask Mr. Reed and...
Brancord.
Mr. Brancord.
Craig Brancord for Stacy and Billy.
I could remember your first name. I couldn't remember the...
That's quite all right. That's quite all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions that I'm not, I don't really care who answers it from the group, but I'd like to know, this five acre parcel, if you look at it from aerial photographs, it appears that, it's certainly wetlands as Mr. Logan had outlined, but there also appears to be areas that have been filled. And I'd like to know whether or not Mr. Stillton has filled any of his acreage there, and if so, how much?
I guess you'd have to answer that, Bill. I don't know the answer.
Yes, I filled in some. I had the DEP over there. They told me I could fill in so far, and that's what I done.
How much did you do?
They've all walked it. They see it.
You gotta answer my question.
I mean, I don't have an exact measurement.
You think you filled in an acre?
So it's really hard. We were not obviously on the site prior to Bill's establishment.
What's the cutoff on?
1995 was the beginning of even the point in time at which the exemption was created under NERPA. And these are forested wetlands. They're not wetlands of special significance, at least in the proximity to his activities. So my guess is that a DEP analysis of this property would suggest that this would have been a lot eligible for exemption. Whether or not that, you know, was met or not, that's a really incredibly impossible thing to determine. It's hard to determine how much has been done in the past. And it's just a, to me, it's pretty evident if you look at the topography of the land, and that's pretty detailed, light arcticographic data, two-foot concord. It appears to me that the wetlands on that lot are essentially in the lowest parts of the land. I don't think that, when I delineated it, I didn't have a strong sense that there were obvious fills because there were, none of the boundaries were irregular. Usually when you're delineating wetlands around a fill area, they tend to be very square-ish. Parking lot areas, for instance, if you're filling for a parking lot, you generally make a square in the wetland. Well, I didn't have edges like that here. These are pretty naturally looking boundaries to me. So I didn't have a strong sense that there was a lot there, if any. And my guess is that it would have been eligible for its exemption after 95. Prior to 95, it was much easier to place fill wherever you wanted to put it in a forested wetland.
Mr. Logan, that exemption would have been for 4,300 square feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. That's not a whole lot of square footage.
It's 1/10 of 1 acre.
I understand that. Mr. Stillton, I want to come back to you and ask you again, how much of that did you fill in? Did you fill in an acre?
No.
Three quarters of an acre?
I couldn't tell you exactly. I, when this happened...
Yeah, Bill's not a place as well as he would have known.
We're just looking for the truth. I've got a theory here, and I just want to find out what he filled.
When this started back in 2002, Dewey asked me. I had my trucks right on my front lawn, right? A buddy to his land. He's 25 feet off the line. We had a few arguments through the years. Dewey comes over, he thinks what he is sometimes. He about run me over at T-Bank and said to me, "What the F are you doing now?" Well, this is the truth, and I'm telling you, you want to hear the truth. So then he calls me, and I said, "Dewey, I'm gonna move my trucks over here to keep them away from your property." "Oh, you don't have to do that, Bill." I said, "I'm gonna do it because I don't want to bother you."
We're getting away from my question, what you filled in.
We're getting to the point of the question.
So I went over there. I had the DEP come over. They told me I could fill in. And Dewey's called him when he...
When was that?
That was probably 2004 or 2003.
Did you obtain a permit from the DEP?
I didn't have to get one from the town.
Not from the town, from the DEP?
No, I didn't have to get one.
If he had the DEP staffer out to show him how much he could fill, and that's what enforcement staff does, then he would have been fine to do that with no permit.
For 4,300 square feet.
Correct, with no permit.
No more.
Correct, correct. That is true, sir.
But it seems to me from the aerial photo...
And when you're asking about filling...
It seems to me from the aerial photos that there's a little bit of lot more fill there. And Mr. Logan, would you...
Are you able to discern how much of that fill is in the wetland?
I'm gonna ask you a question.
Okay, sir.
If in fact he filled wetlands, would you agree with me that you would have to take into consideration filled wetlands into the calculations you've made? And you'd have to add those into the mix. And I'm referring to the Federal Manual identifying and delineating jurisdictional wetlands that was published in 1989.
The Federal Army Corps of Engineering...
And specifically...
4.21. For one thing, you're referring to the 89 manual. I believe you guys are, and most people are delineating wetlands on the 1987 Federal Manual, not the 89 manual.
It's referenced in the ordinance. That's why I prefer it.
Ultimately, if that fill had been placed in accordance with the standards at the time, then my delineation stands, just the way I did it.
If it wasn't, you would have to put that into the mix though, wouldn't you? You'd have to figure in filled-in wetlands.
That's a question that doesn't have a proper foundation because he hasn't identified where it is that he's talking about.
Well, because we weren't allowed access to your land, even though we allowed access to my client's land.
Bill can tell you where the DEP allowed him to fill. And why don't you fucking point it out?
My trucks was...
Bill, show us.
Yeah, here's my trucks here. I went in here. And I had the DEP there every other year because of Dewey. And I even had the hazarded material DEP there. And they'd gone over to his house and said, "No problem." When I went to the town and I said to Dewey, "I want to move these trucks up here to be a nice neighborhood." So I wanted to move them over here out of your way. "Oh, Bill, you don't have to do that." But I did it because I have gone through grief with him for 19 years.
Mr. Stillton, I'm asking you where you filled.
Yeah, yes, that's what they come up, and they said I could go out to here.
Any other places you filled?
No.
Did you improve the road when you sent you purchase it?
I built the road.
Okay, and did you obtain a permit?
You didn't need a permit back then.
And when was that?
Back in, I got that in 19, when did I buy that from you, perhaps? 98?
And you're saying you didn't need a DEP permit for stormwater drain on?
No. I've had a mess there.
And you talked to the DEP about that?
I've had everybody there. I built the road. The town come out. I had filled. I hauled in. That road would probably stand up 10 times better than half the ones that they put in years ago. I mean, I drive heavy equipment over it, and I know that I want it to last.
But no DEP and it's your testimony?
You didn't need it back then.
And it's your test, and that was 19, when, 98?
Yeah, I believe so. I don't have too many.
I don't think that was the law back then.
Well, why didn't the town do something to me then? I went up there and asked them. They knew I was building a house, and I put the road in. I had Bentley won it all.
And you're saying the town allowed you to build?
Yeah, they have. How'd I get up there if they didn't?
And you would agree it was pretty wet back there?
Not everything, not very wet.
No?
No. The weather's hot.
No, as a matter of fact, there's an awful lot of houses around there. If it was very wet out there, there wouldn't be that many houses around. Isn't that the subject of the issue here? Look at all the houses. Look at all the development. And quite frankly, and I didn't review the road, but the air photo does not indicate a whole lot of likelihood of clear wetland impacts. There's no watercourses or water bodies out there. And I get that, you know, well, okay.
Mr. Logan, you'd agree that he would have had to apply or receive a stormwater runoff permit from the DEP?
That is not true, sir. Boy, you guys just want to throw everything on the wall. Jason?
Yeah, let me, so the stormwater, which permit are you referring to? Stormwater, Chapter 500 permit?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't, will it help that? So then that law only took effect...
I'm talking about getting necessary permits.
Yeah, so the town, I wasn't down here for this project at this time. The town would have directed him to get any permits. I'm assuming that he would have needed. Main stormwater law did not take effect until 2005. So any impacts he has between over an acre until he gets to three acres is not, would have been grandfathered in 2005.
You had indicated in your application that that Section 5.6 of explosive materials, what explosive materials would you store on the property?
I don't have any explosive materials.
Okay, and you never would?
I had oil trucks up there at one time.
Yeah.
And the town asked me to move them, so I did.
What were the, and maybe Mr. Baffett, you could answer this. What measurement did you use as far as noise levels? Did you use noise levels for an R4 zone, or did you use something else in establishing your criteria?
The noise consultant researched the ordinance and I believe coordinated that with the town planner. Unfortunately, he's not here. I'm not a noise expert. I can't.
Okay, but didn't they apply the standard for mixed use as opposed to an R4?
I believe you're referring to in his letter, he talks about it being a mixed-use zone, but I think he was describing the zone as one that allows contractor yards. If you have a question specific to the noise study, please submit that in writing, and I'll have him respond to that.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
So I have the noise study here, and it is clear, it's actually in bold, that the person that did this noise study referred to the mixed-use district standards, which I think I said last time when I was here at the public hearing, that R4 is not a mixed-use district per the comprehensive plan. I think we planned up the page numbers. There's four different distinct districts. Mixed use is one, rural conservation, which is R4 is another entirely. So the sound maxims that are referenced in the noise study are actually pointing to the wrong one. It should be the residential districts.
I did have a question for Attorney Jones. Because you referenced that, I think you said it was the north and the east that where you got the easement, is that correct? And so that the south, you referenced that the south was in compliance... And so that the south, you referenced that the south was in compliance of fifty-three decibels. That's a single truck. And per the noise study, on a combined basis, it's fifty-nine predicted decibels, which actually exceeds the residential noise limitations.
That's why we're not proposing to run all four trucks at the same time. If you combine all four trucks at the same time, you would have fifteen-nine.
And I think that, I get back to the point that I made last public hearing, that we have clear seventeen-year history in the town's own files of Mr. Stillfin not abiding by town ordinances. And so, you know, just to reiterate, based on the conversation tonight, that the way that they have to stay in compliance is to stagger the start time and departure time of those vehicles, which I think he's proven for the past seventeen years that whatever ordinance and whatever requirement you put in place, he's not going to follow. We provided plenty of evidence of that. Additionally, that ten decibels for one fifteen-minute period, he's only covered when he exits the property. So what happens when he comes back? He's still gonna be exceeding those noise levels. I'm asking you to take that into some serious consideration as you're discussing the application.
And Mr. Chairman, I see that one of the board members is left.
She has to catch a near point.
I understand that. I'm just wondering, procedural-wise, how a vote might be taken?
The vote will not be taken tonight. The vote will be taken on October eleventh because we have some people that were here tonight, some people that were not here last week that are here tonight. We're having everybody review the video, review the minutes of the meetings and sign an affidavit to the effect that they have done so, or they will not be allowed to vote.
Awesome. I was just gonna make those very points because I know that, I think Mr. Moore, you were here the last... Yeah, great. I really wanted to make sure that, because we put our case in chief on last time. Your suggestion, it's all on videotape, so I'll encourage those members who were not here.
I've already reviewed the videotape and went through the minutes of the meeting.
That's great. And getting to Mr. Jones's point, that gee, you know, sort of making his client sound as though, oh gee, too bad I had to get a consent decree from the selectman. Well, it was about time something happened with the selectman and Mr. Stillfin. And I disagree respectfully with Mr. Jones, with respect to... That they're sending that this over to you for review doesn't mean that they think everything's fine and that you shouldn't look at the history. That is not the proper view, in my opinion. You're empowered and you're charged with looking at an individual applicant. And yes, you got neighbors here. I wanted to get up and ask how far each one of those neighbors really was from the property. Obviously, Mr. Stillfin has friends in town, he has friends in the neighborhood. And he has people who live a lot closer to him than some of these folks who are not his friends because of his past conduct. And I'm glad that you've got the tapes. And those of you who didn't have a chance to hear the live testimony, we'll be able to review them. I had one question for the applicant regarding the Mr. Stillfin. You did acknowledge, and we know this, that you had a fuel tanker on site for a while. When you did the water, what were you doing with that tanker? Were you, was it heating oil? What kind of oil was it?
Number two heating fuel.
And how would you dispense that to people?
I never emptied it until the town asked me to move it. I bought that because we had a bad year, the year before, people running out of heat and fuel and you couldn't get it. You know, you must have seen it this year on the news. But I worked the thing out with Urban Oil now, so that I really don't have to worry.
So you're saying that you never had anybody draw any fuel off that tanker?
Yes, I did at the very end of it. The town code enforcement came over and we emptied it because he asked me to move it.
No one came to your property asking for fuel that you didn't dispense it there?
No.
Did you ever wash equipment on the site?
No.
Never?
No. Did you see the pictures last time?
I didn't, I didn't notice that the garage was wet.
The barn was, you want to come over with, did you walk it? The barn, you know how barn turns gray, like that up there? Well, mine is clear wood again.
Well, it's...
I mean, you can put into your mind whatever you want, sir, and go from there. But I know what was done. The pressure washers out there. And I know where they're getting their stuff from, it's Tom Foka. Ask him how replicable he is. I could tell you some things about Tom Foka, that why he's got fired from every job. And we can make it a whole story.
I understand.
No, I'm just saying, you know, they're bringing in people that...
With respect to these issues, I'm trying to get at the fact that there were some extracurricular activities going on on the site to include fuel, potential washing of equipment. We know about the marijuana, which is a subject of a separate...
Is that marijuana?
However.
Yeah, why do you keep bringing it up? Why isn't the newspaper here this week again? You know, I think, you know, it's just like good news, you know? I watch CNN, Fox News.
Let me ask you a more specific question.
Yeah.
Your water testing? I'm concerned for my clients about the water testing. Where did you test on the site? What did you do?
I got three wells.
Right.
I had one for the medical marijuana, a dug well. I have one for my house.
Yeah.
It's a point. And I got another dug well. I took it from all three.
Did you have that on the...
Yep, so the wells show up here. So there is a well location here, which is next to the barn on this side. That is a dug well. There's a well here, which is also a dug well. And then there's actually the well that serves the drinking water for the house. It's actually underneath the pool and it was a dug well driven point. So I think the maximum depth of groundwater that was tested, what is this, about sixteen feet?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen feet, and these ones are much shallower. These would be eight to ten feet.
And were there any other test pits where you drew water?
Nope, we drew, to test the groundwater, we tested from the wells.
That's all from me.
Does anyone...
I have a couple more.
Okay. He's had a question here before.
I got three. Okay, go ahead.
As far as the noise in the trucks? Yeah, they might leave altogether in the morning. They never pull back in in the afternoon and haul together, never. It's impossible with traffic and the way the jobs go. One truck pulls in, maybe five, ten minutes, another one pulls in. So the noise doesn't even apply in the afternoon.
Thank you.
I live one fifty-two Center Road, Matt Colak.
Your name is?
Matt Colak, one fifty-two Center Road. And I've been outside and you've seen them pulling, they never pull it up together.
Mr. Jones, do you have the actual, the big copy of the site plan that goes with the application? Maybe just the big...
Here's the...
Jason, would you mind if I just...
No.
I have a couple questions.
This is not the most reasonable. The only change is that we showed the truck parking there.
Okay, so just, if I'm clear in my understanding of the... No, this Dewey, these represent trucks, correct? This mark?
Yes, yep.
So we keep talking about four trucks, is that...
Yeah, so I'm going by the requirements of the ordinance, which he has to meet a certain parking requirement based on the ordinance. And that is, that is the minimum number of parking spaces that he needs to provide per ordinance.
So that's why there are six on the chart? So we'll continue... Okay, that makes sense. My other question, and it came up in our meeting last time. So this, this big square white guy is the white utility trailer, the box trailer?
Yep, the one that's currently out here, yep.
Correct, so I believe I raised at our last meeting that that was deemed as one of the two trailers he has allowed on the property today. And I don't think it has been addressed, the fact that there are two trailers towed behind vehicles.
I believe this was a discussion that we had with the codes enforcement officer.
That this was allowed to be one of the two?
That it was, it's storage, it doesn't have wheels, it's not transportable.
But he, at the time, told us it was one of the two.
Right, and that is what the codes enforcement officer said. He asked us about it and we said, you know, when we did the site walk, we deemed that to be a storage facility and not a trailer. And I don't know what has come up on it since then.
Okay, it's a point of conversation, since I never got a resolved... Well, actually, I could send an email to...
It's for sale now, if anybody wants to buy it. It's online, it's on Facebook too.
I did send an email because I noticed that there were two towed behind trailers. I sent an email to, when was that Stacy, was that to Jim or was that to the email that you had? And it was, in that email, it was very clear to say, well, the town clearly said that that trailer, that... That was last fall, that was the email that I entered into there. The white box trailer was considered to be one of the two and that this is new information and that this is the case. And I don't think the town ever followed up. But, you know, I think we have some different understandings of whether or not, because in writing, town officials said to us that this is one of the two trailers and that he is operating outside of his ordinance. But if that is the case, it is...
That would be something... That may, that may have been one of the issues because we told the codes enforcement officer that when we did the site walk and we saw it, we considered it to be storage.
I was very hurt.
He may very well have said, "No, that's not storage, that's a trailer." That's his decision to make. We, the fact that we looked at it and said, "Yeah, okay, that's storage," because that's what it was. If there, I don't remember if there were wheels on it or not, I don't think there were. But if there were, he could have, he could have overruled it and said, "No, that's a trailer because it can be moved and stuff can be hauled around."
That was supposed to be his...
We'll have to check with the codes enforcement officer.
Okay, I'd be happy to forward the email to you.
And again, that would be, that would be an enforcement issue. If we said that he's only allowed to have two trailers and the codes enforcement officer says he's got two and he's counting that one, then he has three. It's up to the codes enforcement officer to enforce the ordinance. That's not something that we have the authority to do.
Do the chair have a question for you?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know anything else, or if anything is questionable there. I don't know how many times a code enforcement officer has been out since our last site walk. I mean, these are all good questions to ask along the way. I mean, because we don't know, because we're not privileged to the activities of the town and how sometimes the town keeps us angry. So, I mean...
It's something we can find out. We can ask Jim Nagel to come and give us a report.
Well, you, I don't just, give us, I mean, because most of the time, Mr. Nagel is done at four o'clock. I mean...
We'll ask him to put it in writing and you can tell us.
Correct, I mean, that way, it's, I said, you said, we said. It's show and tell.
Are there any other questions by anybody for Mr. Stillfin and his attorney? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Teresa O'Donnell and Bill's attorney read a letter from me tonight that I had written on Mr. Stillfin. And I just want to say one thing. The attorney over here, I forget his name, he made a suggestion that we were a bunch of Bill's friends. And I just want to say, myself, Mr. Colak, Mr. Landry, Mr. Newman, we all live across the street or about his property. We are not just friends coming here to say, "Bill's a good guy and we want to say nice things about him." We hear the trucks come, we hear them go, or we don't hear them come, or we don't hear them go. I just want to say, we are immediate neighbors to Mr. Stillfin. We're not just friends coming here to rah-rah him. And I just wanted to make that clear. And I kind of resented that remark. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am?
I guess the only other thing I'd like to say is, when you get to the time of considering this application and making a decision, is that the ordinance requires certain things, as you're very aware. I heard you read them on a prior application tonight, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories and uses of the neighboring properties, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I spoke to some of that, as did Bruce at the last public hearing, that we feel strongly that it is not. And I think the fact that, you know, you look around our properties, we are a residential area. And I personally think it's in direct conflict with the comprehensive plan. I don't think you, you know, one can answer those questions, all those requirements of a conditionally used permit. You can't answer all of them in the affirmative that there'll be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke that will adversely affect neighboring properties so that it's consistent with the current uses when we're all residential around it. So I just wanted to say that one more time.
You should know that when we go through those conditions, if one of them, we, yes, we've decided to take a vote on every one of them. And if one of them fails, the application loses.
Okay.
It gets denied. They have to, they have to be in the affirmative for every one of them. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Elizabeth Kelly Erickson, I live at Sotheby's, Michigan. And this is our house right here. I have a question because...
Which one, please?
Which one?
This one.
That one, okay.
We have a little frog pond that's right here off the page. And this, this water, I know that, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Jim.
Jim, Jim just explained that according with the ordinances and legalities, that this is a neck and it doesn't, you know, you don't have to show how the water goes around here, which is cool if it's not pertinent to the application, that's totally cool with me. I just want to know that if I wanted to grow organic vegetables here and if I wanted to apply to be an organic farm and a grower, if I would be able to, are there any pollutants that would go in the water or in the air that would prevent me from doing that? Because this water flows like right around this way. Jim said that it flows out this way and it does, but it also flows right over into my little frog pond. And I was just wondering if any things that are used in the business would prevent me from getting an organic farm?
Well, I would think you'd want to have the water tested upon them if there's anything in it.
Yeah, if it, what, if there's anything in it right now?
Yeah, why not? If I were gonna spend the money to open an organic farm, right? Have the water tested to make sure that it qualifies for organic farm treatment.
In the University of Maine Co-op, they actually, you can send soil samples in for free and they'll test them.
It's not free. It's thirty-five bucks a sample, but it's still very expensive.
That's interesting. I was just wondering if there's any stuff that you use in your, in your business that would go into the soil or the air? That would, I mean...
I mean, you're gonna get a little diesel, I mean, from the trucks that, you know, goes out of stack on tractor trailer. Well, you get that from the motor homes going up and down Senate Road, going to the campground. I see ten of them a week going up and down.
Hey, question, may I say something on that?
Well, hang on just for a minute. I thought, I just...
I did. Mr. Logan, with regard to the samples that go to main DEP? What are the, oh, no, I'm sorry.
It's the Agricultural Extension Service.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're talking about agricultural samples for...
So what are the analysts that they, that they sample for? Does it include things like heavy metals, DOC, semi-volatiles?
No, those typically are not what is questioned for soil fertility. When you typically for soil analysis for gardening, they're gonna look for nitrates or nitrogen requirements. They generally run it on an array of plant, you know, desired plants and try to give you what phosphorus you may need to adjust. If you need pH adjustment, they're gonna tell you to add lime or not, to adjust pH to get into the right range for best uptake of nutrients and the best plant production. In event of concern, you can ask for additional testing like trace metals. I used to do trace metal analysis, by the way, in soils, working for paper companies because paper company Ash had a lot of trace metals. So it's possible to test for that as well. All that adds to the cost. What I was gonna point out is, at least in terms of your specific question, and notwithstanding where your pond is off the page, your land here around your house is all pretty high and elevated in topography. You see, the house is sitting on a land form that's a knoll. And anything, even if there was a concern through this drainage system, and by the way, wetlands are a good filter. We know wetlands to be a great filter. We know wetlands to be a great filter. In the event, this is the outlet, and activities over here as far away as it could be, it's certainly providing the best amount of buffer that you could hope for. And my guess is that, given the soils that I know out there, you wouldn't have any, any possible thing from here migrating to the top of a knoll where you're trying to create a garden or an organic place.
There's some undermining, like you can't see it from the air, right? Because like the roots of the trees and there's some undermining down by that little frog pond.
Yeah, where the roots would be exposed.
Like undermining, you know, our garden.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
And that would remove a certain amount of the, the surface textured material and carry it down into the wetland system. Hence, the wetland does make a good filter. That's what it does. It traps sediments, among other things. And that might be off of your driveway as much as someone else's in the neighborhood, so.
Okay, I'm just wondering if, if there was any chance while I had the opportunity to ask the question, that any poisons would be getting to food that I was growing over there if I wanted to?
I wouldn't want it either because when I grew medical marijuana, I didn't want nothing in it either.
Mr. Logan, you have another?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of quick questions that'll be done. Mr. Stillman, did you ever spray your equipment with any petroleum products or solvents while they were on your property?
No.
You're sure of it?
I'm very sure. That's another thing coming from Tom Foka.
Well, that's not the only one.
Well, who was the other one?
Well, there's an affidavit on file.
Well, I'd like to see it.
I think you probably have.
I don't believe it.
Anyway, did you ever bury any asphalt, concrete, plastics, or other materials on your property?
I buried gravel, clay.
Asphalt?
A few pieces. D E P told me I couldn't bury, I could bury so much back then. And they said, Billy, don't put no more. And I did just what they told me. It's a recyclable unit now.
Was that, was that asphalt or concrete or both?
Little bit of both. Not much concrete because I take it to Webby House.
And was it...
Do we ought to know that? He called the D E P and they come over to my house and told me what I had to do.
Was it tens of tons of concrete?
No, jeez, come on, come on.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking.
Okay.
In each, very quickly, this lady's comments regarding her soils resonate with the question I was asking about the water sampling. She tests his wells only. It's within your purview. And Jim is saying thirty-five bucks, it might be more than that, to test more than the few locations. But given what you've heard, we just heard testimony directly from the applicant that, yeah, buried a little bit of asphalt, a little bit of concrete. Maybe it would be nice for the neighbors to know whether you approve or deny this. What exactly is in those soils? Maybe some soil sampling wouldn't be the end of the world. I just put it out there and, and would strongly request that you do that, both for us and for other people who've spoken about it.
We, we had the hazardous, hazardous people over. They come with the code enforcement. They went over to Dewey's and told him there's nothing wrong, but he's consistent, trying to tell that, I think he's the only man who thinks he's right. I mean, I mean, people do good things.
That's not good, asking Miss Perkins on color.
Okay, I'm sorry. I need to know.
Through the chair.
Yes, we're set. Are there any other questions from the public for the applicant? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at nine forty-nine. Eight forty-nine, sorry. I, I'm just, I'm just wishing. Eight forty-nine. The board can now ask questions of the applicant. Marty?
Through the chair.
Yep.
Mr. Reed, do I have to sit and watch all the videos since I've been at all the meetings?
Of course not.
Well, the way you just stated before...
Oh, no, that was, I'm sorry. I think you misunderstood, misunderstanding. No, I just want to make sure whoever hasn't seen something gets to see it, Marty, that's all.
Well, the way I understood you, I had everybody just sit and watch.
No, 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 I'm sorry if I left that impression. No, no, I just wanted, you were here.
I know I have been here the hours of testing. I mean, when, when have I not here?
No, you're always here.
I, I checked with our attorney and our attorney said that it would be well advised for people who did not make either one of these meetings to watch the video and sign an affidavit, have it notarized at town hall, that you did watch that and that you have looked at the, the minutes of the meetings, or you, they should not be allowed to vote.
I can't ask her what that, where one of the board members left, if she could, you know, watch what she didn't see, that's all. And Jens is not here, same thing, that's all.
Yep, we have a couple.
Yeah, the other thing is, turn around about soot or anything else. Okay, Bill, when you were saying that, how many of you people out there, okay, have dirty headlights? Okay? Dirty headlights are caused by exhaust fumes. And it's just not coming from one spot or another. You all get dirty headlights, it's like you're wearing glasses, you get dirty glasses too.
I, I do have a question for Mr. Jones. If I understood you correctly, the measurement of the noise was fifty-three dB?
Yes.
Okay, because according to the ordinance, and I looked it up, residential districts, the maximum is fifty-five. And in a mixed use, the maximum of sixty. So you, whether he measured it for residential or mixed use or business districts, at fifty-three, he fits into any of the standards for any of the districts. Yes, ma'am?
That's single truck combined is fifty-nine, correct?
No, we don't.
If you look at the...
It, it just says that noise will be measured by a meter and it needs to meet the N C standards.
There's always study.
Which, which page you want?
Um, I gotta find it, I'm not sure.
Oh, on the study, I don't have the noise study in front of me. I'm just telling you what the standard happens to be.
I'd like it back, but I can show it to you. So attorney Jones was saying that it's...
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Fifty-nine all combined, which is why they, first of all, they pointed to the wrong one. Boldly, it's mixed use. This is clearly residential by the comprehensive plan, I think that as well. Which is why they propose staggering because they cannot meet, even, even at the mixed use, they were proposing staggering to meet the noise ordinance and they're pointing to the wrong one. It is, it's residential district, it's our four. So these, so...
Okay, thank you.
They, they couldn't all come back at the same time, anyway.
Okay, I do see what you, okay, I hadn't seen this one, the stability of the ordinance, uh, the...
That's in the application, yeah. Fifty-three is one truck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chandler, none of my trucks do come back at the same time. They, they'll come in, somebody leaving three o'clock in the afternoon, if I don't meet them, they're gone. I can't see having them sitting on the job till five, six o'clock and not paying, and paying them.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? No?
No.
We will be taking some time to review this. We will be making a decision on October eleventh. If you have any other information that you would like us to review, or you want to make it part of the record, make sure that Mr. Redway gets it so that he can pass it on to the rest of us.
Through the chair.
Marty?
I will not be here the eleventh.
Okay. Well, I hope the rest of us make it.
I'm just saying.
I know, I understand.
I have commitment to be out of state for a little Wisconsin.
Okay, I'm coming back in between out of state trips.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time, your patience, and...
Is there time you want Ted to get materials that be considered?
As quickly as you can get it, preferably before the twenty-seventh, which is the next meeting. And that will give us two weeks to review all of the information.
So it won't be the next meeting?
It won't be the twenty-seventh, it will be the eleventh.
Day before Columbus Day. Columbus Day is October twelve.
Okay. Somebody make a motion. Well, do you have anything else that we have to...
No, we got other business.
Do we have, do you guys have any other business I don't have?
I'd like to know what he might have up his sleeve that we don't know about.
From what I understand, no.
I mean, it's what I'm saying, other business, I mean, uh, if you don't know, we can't...
Well, you now affect ice skating.
I know you.
Nobody was born. I want to get changed. If you're changing what you're thinking.
Yes. You can always say, everybody has an opinion, okay? But the fact is, in books, because by just sitting home, by sitting home...
Somebody speaking for you.
Well, sitting home and you're, no, no, and by watching the, the TV for the town of Kennybunk, you have an opinion when you're talking back to the TV. So guess what, it's time to turn on, to put yours in, so, in your own town.
No. I, I think, I think on the agenda for the next meeting, K T W with the water tank.
Oh, that's a big...
I believe that one is on there.
Did anybody go to site walk on that? I went the first time.
Nice meeting you.
Thanks for knowing that.
Bye-bye, you too.
There is, I believe Motor Lane is on there with the auto museum, but I'm not sure.
They pulled that once.
They pulled something, I don't know if it came back on.
No, they pulled about, for the idea, uh, either definition or whatever it was, maybe about the museum.
They still, they still want to pursue it.
Yeah, 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 but I'm just saying, but it's, they had, it was on their request, not ours.
That's right. They, they did request that it get pulled, I just, I'm not sure if it got put back on.
Yeah.
There were, like I said, I believe there were five items.
I don't know.
A couple of brand new.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I know there was turn on with the, uh, uh, random machine tools, okay? Because they have the, some of the equipment and everything else parked on the docks and...
Yeah, it, it, it's been delivered, they, they have no place to put it, which is why I wanted it to go to site review. So they can do it and get it done and he can get his equipment in on, in there, whether it's...
It's no impact to the property.
It isn't.
But I, I did have to mention that when they asked you to recuse, turn on, you see, that would have been the second one. Because then with first thing timed, the first meeting, before they even went to public hearings or anything else, I was accused, I was requested to be, uh, I was biased.
Somebody make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.